Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It is Tuesday, November 28th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a motion to approve the minutes of November 14th, 2017, regular meetings.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous with missing one. That motion passes. We have time for public comment? No public comment, thank you. All right, on to reports and discussions. Our principals are here to fill us in on what's happening in the buildings.
Good evening, everyone. You may notice I traded my tie in this morning and shirt for a honor of Augie. We went to go see Fifth Grade, asked me to join them. We went to go see Wonder. Great message. The kids applauded, like applauded at the end. It was pretty awesome. But we had our own private showing at 10:15 this morning. There was no one else in the movie theater, the one in Red Hook. And Mrs. Bailey was coming up to make t-shirts for all the adults, so some of the kids wore their ones too, so I feel like we can talk about this meeting. So that's one of the things that are going on at Chancellor that happened today. Proud to report, happy to report, our annual Grade Five CPR AED training with Northern Duchess Paramedics occurred on the 20th of this month. We do that every year, so the fifth graders get an opportunity to really understand what those CPR and what the AEDs that they see in our building do. And it's always nice to have a higher for the kids training, several times throughout their career in the district where that happens. But the CPR first in the fifth grade at Chancellor, so we were able to do that on the 20th. Grade Three Team Workouts, also another annual event. I wanted to thank the PT SO for their funding, as well as we always have a lot of parent volunteers for this event. Takes place a large portion of the day in our gym. There's a lot of stations, teamwork activities, obstacle courses, testing visual memory, things like that, so this is an opportunity to work together. We do that every year. Always a great event. Also wanted to give a little shout out, congrats to our CLS PE department. I'm sure you know this by now, but for the second year in a row, they won the, they were a winner of the Second Annual Get Moving Grant. And we're now on to Project Fit America Grant, where we can possibly secure about $25,000 worth of PE equipment for our playground. As you could imagine, Kevin and Ryan are really pounding the pavement to figure out ways, we're actually, the three of us are working together, to figure out ways to get the information out to everyone, you know, beyond just the normal, you know, school messenger or parent newsletters and things like that. So we'll be sending certain things out to families over Christmas. I believe we already asked initially in our parent newsletter just last week, we've got some really good responses for people who want to try to help be ambassadors, you know, the parents, people from the community, to help get people to vote. So it's another one of those voting things, can only work once from, you know, from the same computer, and it'll be throughout January, so stay tuned, I think we reported on that. We'll definitely be kind of getting the word out through December, and then hopefully January we can start. We are actually one of 19 schools in the entire country who won the finals for that, so that's actually a real possibility. So good luck to them, but that's, we're moving on to that one next. Much Sparcher Grant than the Genuine Grant. Also, in Northern Duchess News, I just wanted to mention, for the first time, you know, several times a year, we have a great relationship with that newspaper, and they come very often. We invite them to events and things like that. This is the first time in my change years where we've actually been mentioned, we're the school of the week twice in the same issue, two full page spreads, one specifically for our annual third grade pumpkin delivery to Beaman Arms, which is a great one, and also for the conclusion, it was more of the conclusion of our Harry Potter unit, just to kind of, you know, about teaching students values and things when we did that unit. So we got a shout out to both two sides, two full sides I had on the album, if anyone didn't see it. I should have, but if not, I do have one. Also wanted to just mention a couple of PD type thing initiatives we're doing in the building. One of the big ones is Fern Locks. My assistant principal and I spent some time this year, the beginning of this year, talking to staff and letting them know that, you know, in addition to any of the normal work we do with specific grades and some of the things I mentioned with Anderson, as far as a good cohort of three, four, five teachers that have different classroom management strategies. So there's a lot of different things we're doing. Fern and I had kind of thrown out to the staff, wanting to know if there was anyone who was interested in kind of creating a study group with the two of us, and trying to kind of, you know, play more of the role of colleague, and, you know, all of us kind of working together to delve deeper into guided reading, especially at the primary grade. So we have a group of about seven students who are interested in doing that on their own time. We're meeting about once a month, and I was able to purchase the factors of guided reading textbook, pretty much, it's kind of everything you need to know. But this is something we were able to buy for everyone, and I just wanted to commend that staff for taking their time out to kind of better their practice. The idea being that hopefully we can share some of those best practices at faculty conferences. In addition, I wanted to just mention, this past November 14th is World Diabetes Day, so we have two students at CLS with type one diabetes, so we're always working with those parents. One particularly, to just kind of get information out, and one of the things we did was, like I mentioned, on the 14th, we had everyone wear blue, to just raise awareness. We also had some parents come and interview children's voice to some of the younger students about what that is. We even sent out through our parent newsletter and other venues to parents signs to look for, you know, a student who might have type one diabetes, you know, a baby crisis, so just kind of a raise awareness. So we did that this month. I've also been collecting feedback from parents and staff about our dismissal procedures, just to kind of, you know, get their feedback on, because we have about a third of our families probably, about a third pick up, maybe a little bit less pick up at the end of the day, so just kind of ways we can make that more secure. So there were some really nice next steps that we got from not only staff, but parents, and I met with my dismissal team and greeters to begin putting some of the suggestions in place. So through our newsletter, I can let parents know, hey, you know, keep an eye out for this, that, and everything, one of the big things we're gonna do is bring back some version of a card that's dismissal daily, Monday through Friday. Putting that together creates some more logistics that kind of organize the students better in the gym and things like that, but just to make people aware, keep eyes out, and make things a little more secure. In addition, I recently attended a DASSA update meeting at Bosse's and have some great resources to share with my colleagues around teaching tolerance and responding to hate and bias at schools, as well as addition to forms and plans that can help with investigations and things. It was a really good, well-spent day, and we're packing together that information for John and Eddie, who are also the house supporters, who's a good two ladies. So upcoming events, our December Faculty Conference, another PD opportunity. Our very own Noel Stares, if she works with us at OT, will be presenting to staff a workshop on student sensory needs and strategies to help work with those students K through five. 7/11th and 12th, the Center for Prevention of Child Abuse will be coming to work with our K through five classes once again. As you may remember, we got an amazing amount of feedback, really nothing but positive, very developmentally appropriate lessons, K, one, two, literally incorporate. So they'll be coming on those two days, it's a full day, and then we try to split, give up ample time to each class, we need to present, they usually send two presenters, so we're able to do classes at a time. Also, our annual Grade Four and Five Winter Concerts at CLS are in the middle of December 14th, coming up in a couple of weeks, and that's what's happening this month.
Questions or comments?
Always great stuff, thank you. Thank you for everything. On the outreach effort for the big grant for the PE department, have you considered reaching out to our support groups and Culture Connect, PT SO, RSF, and asking them to spread it?
We actually have been. We've been, actually, it's funny, we've gotten a lot more of like people from tops, parents in the community, a part of Rotary, and things like that, so no, we actually haven't thought about that to be honest.
Might be a good place to go.
Thank you.
And of course, too, the whole school messenger list, because we all had kids at Chancellor, I'm sure we'd all be happy to vote.
And I would also wish out to my colleagues as well.
They'll love you voting.
Maybe we'll find multiple computers.
And I even have, like, my brother works for Sinta's and really works for most of Long Island, so wish out to him, and started kind of spreading, so we're all kind of doing that. So thank you.
Yeah, that's great. And then my other question, I'm fascinated that the cards are coming back at Chancellor, they were there when I was there, so I didn't realize they had left, but I'm wondering about the bus dismissal and how that's going, you know, we were sort of moving timing around to get kids on the bus and...
It's good. I mean, it's got better than last year, and it's last year when it got better and better. You know, right now, if we have one bus kind of of kids waiting in the cafeteria for a minute or two, nobody's leaving later or anything like that, we might have, you know, one or two buses. Where we, we actually do push back a little bit the timeframe, which, and we've changed some of the logistics about how the classes leave the building as well, because it's more at the front end, you know, getting back, they come, they're not there at my building as early as they used to be, but they're there on time, and it's not a problem. Like I said, we have about, usually about one class, if that, then we have to wait in cafeteria with staff for about five minutes before that bus gets there. Everybody's even on time?
Great, great, thank you.
Jacqueline?
Lots of great news, thank you. Also, question about the dismissal. You mentioned about a third of the family or the students are...
Probably about closer to a quarter, I guess, but yeah, you have probably about 150 kids in each cafeteria.
Is that consistent with over the time that you've been there, is that more?
Yeah, yeah, about that, yep.
And do we have any sense of, I mean, it seems like a high number to me, do you have a sense of, or have you studied why so many people are pickups?
No studies, but I mean, to be honest, I think, you know, we have a lot more parents and we're lucky in our community that hang on, come and, it's funny that you ask that, because when I started, you know, we looked within for some feedback, but also reached out to colleagues, friends that are in other schools, my kid's principal, like, hey, what do you do? And what I noticed is not in a single, not in a single district that I had spoken to as far as friends and things, my wife's district in Peekskill, do they have as many kids being picked up? So I think, you know, it kind of justified my thought that, you know, we're lucky, we have a lot of parents that work from home, parents that can come and get kids in the afternoon, so I've always thought that is probably why, and it's not the best data I've got.
Any more questions? Thank you so much for sharing all the good news with us. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, John couldn't be here tonight, and he asked me to deliver his report in his place. So to begin, on BMS on November 9th, BMS held its annual Veterans Day Assembly. This year's keynote speaker was Major Malia Dumont. Major Dumont has served in the U.S. Army Reserves, first as an enlisted soldier from 1990-92003, now commissioned officer since 2003. In addition, she's currently Chief of Staff at Bard College, I believe I had the privilege of meeting her very briefly. Major Dumont spoke to our students about the seven core Army values, loyalty, duty, respect, service, honor, integrity, courage, as she reflected on her time in the service. More than 125 students participated in this year's ceremony, that's more than half of the BMS student body. 199 veterans were honored, and were approximately 60 guests. And each of those numbers John reports represents an increase over previous years. And as always, I tried to peek in for a few minutes during that assembly, it's just really a special occasion and wonderful, wonderful assembly presented by BMS Bobby Blum. In addition, in early November, eighth grade ELA students finished reading the novel Inside Out and Back Again by Tanha Lee, while researching and learning about the universal experiences of refugees from conflicts in Afghanistan, Southeast Asia, Vietnam, Bosnia, and Iraq. The project culminated with a gallery exhibit during which students displayed their original historical friction and free verse poems. Earlier this month, seventh grade social studies classes finished their research project on the Salem Witch Trials. This is thanks to an arts and education grant. They were able to work with improv artist Danny Dillon, along with Pat Sexton and Martha Tobias, as they learned about the trials by reenacting them. Their work culminated in a performance for parents and fifth grade classes on November 17th, while in attendance, fifth grade students were able to work with our improv artists between performances. Again, that's another occasion that I exercise some executive privilege and stick my head in the auditorium while that's going on, it's just wonderful. Once again, this year, BMS has been invited to participate in Catching Kids Caring. This is a program sponsored by the Koans Club, began several years ago as an anti-bullying program designed to improve school climate by recognizing students for demonstration of positive character and leadership. BMS will nominate one student at each grade level on a quarterly basis. All nominees will be recognized during presentation at Opel and Books in early June, rather than on a quarterly basis as in years past. BMS will once again recognize students by grade level on a quarterly basis through a variety of different activities. Students will be recognized for effort, perseverance, improvement, and achievement. In art club news, the eighth grade annual knit for the knitting campaign has begun. More than 50 people participated in the kickoff party. Blankets are being knitted throughout the month of December, and they'll be donated to Ambassador Intensive Care Unit on Christmas Eve. Last year, more than 60 blankets were donated, and this year, the club is pushing for even more. This week, peers of the peer leadership, members of the peer leadership club participated in the first of several collaborative events with CLS students, spending yesterday reading to and with kindergarten students. There are some upcoming events from BMS. Parent teacher conferences take place this Friday afternoon and Monday evening. Of course, that's called for BMS and RHS. Students in computer science classes have begun programming activities, and in honor of Computer Science Education Week, all BMS students, grade six through eight, will be participating in the Hour of Code coding activities throughout the month of December. This event is sponsored by code.org in an effort to promote the importance of computer science education. There's a BMS band concert on Thursday, December 7th. The BMS Student Council Annual Tool Drive takes place December 13th through December 20th. The first dance of the year will be this Friday on the first. Once again, this is thanks to the support of the RSF. Eighth grade students will be traveling to Bard in January. The date is to be determined to participate in the Day of Science. Thanks to an arts and education grant, eighth grade students will participate in Taking a Stand: Civil Rights in America. This is a project where they will have the opportunity to research social injustice throughout history and work with local artists to create their own pieces for a gallery to be held in late January. And finally, thanks to an arts and education grant, artists from ENTOM, Education Network of Teachers and Artists, and seventh grade students will learn about the human skeleton and body movement through dance and sculpture during the month of January. So that's BMS. I've been trying to answer some questions.
I don't know if you can field questions or not. Comments? Perhaps you should carry on into the high school.
Moving to the high school, I'd like to begin with some updates from our building level planning team. Our second and hopefully annual Day of Service took place on November 4th. We had a dozen students work in the memory garden. We had three students participate in assisting with village tree planting. The BLPT is currently working on a winter Day of Service, as I mentioned in your earlier report, I believe we're trying to schedule one for each athletic season, or in the fall, winter, and spring. The BLPT is working on the Winter Day of Service in conjunction with the Star Library, and I look forward to reporting to how that takes more definition. I've mentioned that the BLPT was looking at inviting a speaker on diversity to speak with our students. We were able to secure Dr. Michael Fallon to come and visit us in January. Thanks to the support from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, we'll have Dr. Fallon speak to both our high school students and our middle school students. I had two different assemblies on one day, so Mr. Chemnitzer and I will work together to see how that schedule works, so I'll be interested to find out. We've never done that before, and it's an interesting challenge. Around different tables, I believe I've mentioned, the high school faculty's discussion of the work on something called the Growth Mindset. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk again about this topic. Since last year, the high school faculty has been reviewing and discussing this body of educational research, in shorthand known as the Growth Mindset. The most well-known practitioner is Carol Dweck, and it's a well-established field of studies, 20, 25 years old, so it's something that's not totally supported. Very briefly, Growth Mindset research indicates that students' attitudes about their own learning, their ability to learn, impacts their engagement at school, their motivation, and their academic achievement. Students who believe that their ability to learn is malleable and changeable and can improve experience greater academic success, greater motivation, greater engagement in school, better self-efficacy. Students who believe that their ability to learn is fixed, however, don't experience those things. So the faculty's been reviewing this research. Last year, we talked about ways to provide students, feedback to students that emphasize process over the final product, and certainly more than individual innate quality. This year, we're continuing that partnership by implementing a project with Stanford University called Growth Mindset for Ninth Graders. Again, very briefly, this involves two online modules that are facilitated by a teacher, and in these modules, our ninth graders will learn about current brain research, they learn about the fact that they can take control of their own learning, they learn about successful study strategies and some problem-solving abilities. Once they've completed the two modules, the high school faculty's provided with their feedback, and that will give us some information in terms of how to support them and continue to develop a growth mindset. So I look forward to reporting back to you in terms of the end of that project and our firm work with all grade levels in supporting this attitude about learning. In academic updates, in the English department, students in English 12 have selected topics of study for extended research activity called the Passion Project. These investigations will culminate in a written research paper and an oral presentation. In addition to doing some research in traditional academic ways for this topic, students will also have a chance to reach out to a community member who has expertise in various areas of study. The Star Library has kindly agreed to host a master and apprentice mixer on December 15th. Our seniors will be paired with library patrons who have expertise in certain areas, so that the mentors can share their knowledge. And we'll be receiving this invitation presently through our school messaging system, if you have not already. In addition, Rhinebeck High School's Poetry Out Loud competition was a success. Students recited poems from the Poetry Out Loud anthology and from their ELA classmates. As a side note, when Mrs. Willard proposed this project last year, my first question was, oh, poetry out loud, that sounds great, where are the poems coming from? My thought was it was like a poetry slam, which made me a little bit anxious, but I managed to learn that all these poems come from an anthology, so they're all established and embedded. The next step is that our semifinals will complete, compete in a school-wide competition during our Drama Club's Black Box Theater taking place tomorrow night. I'll be doing some more detail about that. A winner will be selected from those performances and will get to the regional competition in February. Next, in the English department, students in our journals and class are learning about the municipalities that make up Rhinebeck. Thanks to Mayor Bassett, the journals and classes were commissioned to write a village newsletter. The first issue will clarify the differences and relationships between the village and town. Lastly, in the English department, thanks to Bard College for hosting our ninth graders, for yet another day of reading, writing, and thinking, and so much experience for our students. In the social studies department, as you know, we have a section of introduction to sociology. Mr. Frischknecht's students, thanks to his connections in Madagascar, are working with Mr. Frischknecht's connections in Madagascar on a joint process, a joint project that focuses on the topic of youth imprisonment and youth involvement in the criminal justice system, both in Madagascar and in New York State. So to work on this project, Mr. Frischknecht has invited our SROs, County Attorney Vic Sibotelo, and representatives from the Bard Prison Initiative to speak with our students about this topic, and they'll be developing a final project, a final research project, which they'll share with our colleagues in Madagascar and vice versa. In the math department, our computer science principal, students have moved on from programming to designing apps, and several weeks ago, had a demonstration of all their apps. These included an app that was piano, an app that was a white noise generator, an app that was a physics equation calculator, and an app that was... So they're really moving by leaps and bounds every couple of weeks in terms of developing their skills and technology. In the science department, in earth science, Mr. Rocco's students are learning about the magnetic compass and Earth's magnetic field, as well as GPS systems. Their lab is taking place outside as long as the weather holds. In addition, Mr. Rocco has completed work on an augmented reality sandbox, and this is thanks to the support of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. This is a model to model and understand geologic processes, for example, erosion and the different effects of water landscapes. In our arts department, so it was a successful field trip to see Miss Saigon in Broadway. Right before Thanksgiving, our art students traveled to the Metropolitan Museum of Art and were able to carefully and slowly, like an early enough tour, both the Michelangelo and the Orbanis in the middle of the middle. In our guidance department, we completed an eighth grade pair reading. Our counselors are currently investigating the desirability and feasibility of incorporating a software program or suite of programs called Naviance into their guidance process. Very briefly, Naviance is a software program, the center programs, that facilitates career exploration, college exploration, also allows students to develop a portfolio, a career portfolio that will follow them through their high school years, assists and facilitates the college application process, so it has a lot of capability. We are currently investigating that to see if it'd be a good fit for our function in guidance department. In our co-curricular department, I mentioned the November 29th, the High School Drama Club presenting a series of presentations in the Black Box Theater. I had asked Ms. Bear what Black Box Theater means, what that is, and she told me. So what that means is both actors and audience will be set up on the stage of Rhinebeck High School Auditorium for three short student-directed plays, a variety of monologue presentations, and lastly, the poetry recitations by the finalists from the Poetry Out Loud competition. And lastly, our Model UN on November 11th, 12 of our students traveled to Bard for the annual Model UN conference. Our students played, well-played delegates from 10 different countries in five different simulated United Nations committees, including the Historical Crisis Committee. This is the third year that our students have attended this Model UN conference. Two of our delegates, one honorable delegate, which is a second class, which is, in my view, very impressive, but sure. Looking ahead, we have a band concert on December 6th, and our National Honor Society induction is on December 11th.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I actually have a question. Is it correct the apps will still be available for viewing in the high school during the conference days? I think there was some sort of possibility that we might be able to stop by Mr. Randall's room for those of us who are...
I don't know, I wouldn't be surprised if they weren't available, go let him know.
Right. And also, of course, it's wonderful that you're continuing to pilot those sort of drop-in, the day where there's sort of drop-in office hours, correct, with faculty?
Yes, I think this is the, again, BLPT initiative, I think this is the third year that we have this blended approach, and it seems to be working well, so I just made the containment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, Board of Education Obligations under New York Law, Section 1125.
Yeah, this is an annual reminder, at the suggestion of Mr. Frank Miller, who provided an in-service on this topic to our staff quite a few years ago, actually, and apologize for the grainy copy, but there are a number of New York State laws that identify mandated reporters for various situations. 3028A of Ed Law lists mandated reporters for, if they believe or have knowledge that a student under the age of 21 is a substance or alcohol abuser, they're mandated to report that as outlined in your, in your handout there. Ed Law 3028C addresses the reporting of acts or potential acts of violence or weapons possession. Social Services Law 413 and 420 deal with reporting suspected child abuse, but the one section of law that I want to bring to your attention as board members is the one with the big fuzzy asterisk that looks like a... is the one with the big fuzzy asterisk that looks like a spider over there, and it's Ed Law 1125, which calls out school board members as one of a number of mandated reporters. Those other sections of the law that I mentioned briefly, school board members are not mandated reporters. Now, there was a few heard information about any of those things. You don't have a legal obligation to report it, as do other members of our school's staff, like counselors or teachers. However, board members are called out in New York Ed Law 1125, which deals with knowledge or suspected suspicion of child abuse in the educational setting, as opposed to a suspicion of child abuse that may be occurring at home. That's a teacher or a counselor's a mandated reporter for that, but as a board member, you are one of a number of school staff who are mandated to report if you have information or suspicion of child abuse in an educational setting, typically by an adult, although it doesn't specifically call out adults. School setting could be in the school building, on the athletic field, on the school bus, at a school activity off-campus. They are all considered the school setting. So if you were to get some information, whether it had been corroborated or not, you would be mandated to report that, and that reporting would typically go through me or one of the building principals. But you can't keep that to yourself. You've got to, you're held harmless for reporting. You can't be, you know, you can't be legally held accountable for that, but you could be if you knew and did not report. So again, I'm not trying to make a big deal about this, and those of you who've been on the board for more than one year have heard this every year for the last several. This is purely reminder, so if something like that comes across your radar, child abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse in the school setting, you're obliged to report that to me or to Tom or to some administrator of the school district, then we'll, we have obligations to take it from there. So that's, there's probably more here than you really need to know or want to know, but if you want to read it, feel free. But it's really, the first three pages are the meat of the issue for you as a school board member. So I just, and again, when Frank Miller did his in-service back quite a few years ago, his recommendation to us as administrators, because typically, board members don't think of themselves in that role of a mandated reporter. So he said, you know, probably a good idea just to put it on one of your agendas, and every year when it comes up, just remind your board members of that. So that's all this is, is a reminder. So you've been reminded.
Joe, on page two, it also seems helpful, this point number four, which actually defines abuse, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's actually important.
Yep.
And as you've already outlined, what constitutes an educational setting is clearly established there.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's all I had was, you know, for me to read this to you, it's pretty self-explanatory, and if you want to go further, there's plenty of case law in there, but...
Any questions? Great, thank you, Joe. Let's move on to board reports, long-range planning.
So these aren't really minutes so much as bullet points about conversation topics that came up at our Coffee with the Board, which was billed as a long-range planning event, but, you know, as these things always happen, parents came and are happy to talk to us about all kinds of things that are on their minds. So those things are all sort of listed here. There was discussion about the PTSO, about developments of more arts in the curriculum at the elementary level. You know, there were, the idea of the community garden came back up, the writing curriculum, the math curriculum. These are all chancellor-related topics that we touched on. Communication seemed to be a big hot button. Everything sort of came back to if there was better communication around the things that were going on in the schools, then people might be a little bit feeling better informed. The evening session had a bunch of people. It was the best turnout I think we've ever had for a coffee. It was really great. And that was much more focused on sort of long-range planning discussion. I think to a person, they all agreed that our size and our, sort of, the teachers that know our kids is what makes Reinbeck special, and they, none of them wanted to lose that closeness. So we got some great information. Unfortunately, we can't reach out to Realtors, as we had hoped, to try to get promotional brochures there, but the Westchester Medical, what used to be St. Francis, it's Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital now, they're doing a huge expansion. And so there was a great suggestion about reaching out to those folks that help people relocate to this area, the doctors and the medical groups relocating to this area, because they do provide docs lots of information about, you know, schools and areas to live and that kind of thing. So we will try to do that and communications. We talked about emotional wellness around supports for kids who aren't necessarily on a special ed track, but who may have behavioral issues and helping to, our teachers learn to identify those earlier and manage those situations better. Nutrition, as part of the Health and Wellness Committee, came up, and a request for more communication about the redevelopment of our wellness policy. And, you know, everybody wants foreign language in every grade, and, you know, if there was a way that general ed teachers at Chancellor could incorporate Spanish and English side by side in their lessons, and, you know, great, great ideas and things that, you know, sort of go to all kinds of committees, standing committees. So we will work away at these things.
Questions?
Not a question, but more so a comment. I agree with Laura. I thought the turnout, actually, for both events was really encouraging. I mean, we didn't have 100, 200 people there, but in terms of prior coffees, I thought the turnout was good. I thought the conversation was good. The only caveat, and I will say this generally, not targeted to any specific items on this list, but to be fair, while there were some great ideas that people raised or good questions that they raised, not everything everybody says at these coffees is factual. So before I would dismiss any particular idea, just on the basis of Laura's pretty darn accurate reporting of what was brought up, I would want to make sure that we do our due diligence and research that before we just write something off because a person said, "You can't do this," or "This isn't allowed," or whatever. So that's all, and that's no way to diminish the overwhelmingly great ideas and feedback that came out of that session. But I just wouldn't want to write anything off just because somebody came to that and said, "You can't do that," or "That's not right." Well, let's make sure we know that's a fact before we take that out of our planning going forward. And I'll leave it at that. But yeah, it was, feedback was, I think, really valuable, and hopefully, we can take some of these things and run with them as the year and years unfold. It was good feedback.
Yeah. I would also just add to that point you've raised, Joe. One of the most invaluable things we derive from these conversations is it helps us to understand the perceptions of the school and the community, which is actually a big part of what long-range planning is, trying to get at through the survey that we're still kind of collecting feedback on. And so I agree, rather than sort of view each of the individual points as somehow factuals, it strikes me as very helpful in terms of understanding perception and motivation for recent arrivals in the district, because actually, there weren't quite a few brand-new people, brand-new families in the district. Okay. Personnel, we don't have Diane here. I, oh, Diane is here. Here she comes.
Just in time.
What amazing timing. Perhaps we should do policy, and then we'll come back. If you want to, please, you want to talk about policy?
Sure.
All right. So Joe started off the meeting with three policies that need our attention. Policy number 2510, new board member orientation. Deirdre had brought to Joe's attention other district policies regarding new board members and wondered if there's anything more that our district could provide to new board members. Meeting protocol was one area that we could add to the training, maybe providing more of a checklist of what to do. There's also a question of a new board member attending executive session before being sworn in, and we're checking with legal, but also wanted feedback from the board. And Joe was going to check on new board members training required. Policy 5252, student activities funds management. Ours is not adequate based on the audit, so what Joe did was take what the audit had called out and weave their recommendations into our policy as just an option that we could go with. The green highlights were Tom, the yellow was Joe, and the red is a typo. I wasn't sure if that was going to get into the packet or not. The controller has a policy which Tom is leaning towards, making some regulations, for example, donations. Donation on page 41 of that document. Do we really need a receipt for every hot dog sold or have records of what you bought, what you sold, and what was collected? The clubs will need guidelines to follow the new regulations, and details can be put into a handbook for club advisors, maybe even have club advisors sign off that they have received the handbook. Compliance to the audit. We know we have 90 days to submit our compliance report around 12:22, and after the deadline, we have before the next full year for implementation. It is the opinion of the policy committee that the district is best served if we adopt a policy that has an effective date this summer. By doing so, everyone involved with student activities funds management will be informed that the new regulations are being instituted. Everyone will have time to renew their charter, and the district will have time to purchase ledgers, create the handbook, et cetera. Joe has also agreed to take a look at our fundraising policy 5251. And policy 812 for the Naxalone program, brand named Narcan. Our district has had a draft form for a while. Questions that have come up, who do we direct to be trained, and what is their liability? As it turns out, you are protected by the Good Samaritan Law, so liability is not an issue, and it is not dangerous to receive a dose of Naxalone if you are not using opioids. Our policy will require that all nurses be trained to administer Naxalone, but this does not leave, but this does leave a gap for coverage for after-school activities when the nurses have left the building. The policy committee is in full support of approving a Naxalone policy and want to move forward. Outstanding is policy 4526, health and wellness is still in commission. Nice meeting you this time.
Okay, questions, comments?
Quick question about your point about whether new board member training is required. Are you talking about in-house training, or, because we know that you have to be trained through NISBA. So is this just in-house?
Right. It was just a question that came up. I mean, not that saying it's a bad thing, but we just wanted to make sure, other than the financial training, which is required for new board members, I'm not sure if there's another module that's been around for a while. We're just curious as to whether there's any, we just didn't want to miss something. I don't think that's the case, and I think it really was more discussion of what might we want to consider adding to our current policy that it isn't in there currently. We do have a policy on that topic right now. It's not like we have none, but we'll take a look at that.
Want to discuss the executive session bit now, or do we want to table that for later? For a section?
About new board members? After they've been voted in?
Yeah.
It's not really, is that good session? Oh.
The question of the second session.
Three months, or should we?
You wanted us to weigh in on it, right?
Yeah.
So what are people's views? Participation prior to being...
Do we even know if it's legal?
Right. We need to find that out.
I think that's the first question, because even if attorneys may say, "No, you can't do that." Only sitting board members may. I don't know. One way or the other.
Yeah, because you haven't sworn confidentiality and...
That's kind of, that's really the question.
That would be the stumbling block, right?
I mean, you can, the board can invite somebody into executive session. For example, if the board is discussing like a student matter, which should be in executive session because of confidentiality concerns, the board can, if they want to, for example, allow the parent of that student to come into executive session. It's allowable. It's not required. There's no right for the parent to be able to come into executive session. I remember a number of years back, there was a transportation-related issue, and we had a conversation about, should we allow their attorney to come into executive session? To the best of my knowledge, the board can allow people to. The issue with board members is because they're not sworn in, they're not obliged to maintain confidentiality, so does that create some kind of a conflict or an issue? I think that's really the, that's really the pertinent question. But beyond that, there's also a comfort level of the members of the board as to whether, even if it's permissible under law, that doesn't mean it's required under law, certainly not required under law. So I mean, actually, I don't know if that's something you want to think about, and, you know, maybe the legal answer gives us a direction, but it's something worth, because if you're put in your policy, then regardless of who gets elected in a given May, if your policy says, yes, they're allowed to attend executive sessions of the board for the last three board meetings before their term starts, then you have to let him or her in.
Right, yeah.
And if it says no, then it's no, regardless of who it is who gets elected. So that's just, just something to ponder that I think would be a judgment call on the board's part if you're going to build that into your policy.
Diane?
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be consistent. It has come up in the past, because a lot of times, those meetings, there's information that that board member's going to need to know. You know, valuation is done a lot of times then, so, you know, there's definitely pros and cons to it, but it should be consistent, because I know sometimes it comes up and then sometimes it doesn't, and it just should, you know, we should kind of know for sure.
Laura? Yeah, well, I think the legal question will be a big part of this, but I think my gut reaction is maybe not make it part of policy, but potentially part of practice if there are issues that are coming to executive session that will be handed to the new board members. You know, it could be handed on a case-by-case basis rather than, you know, in policy where a new board member who hasn't been sworn in just assumes that they should be part of it. I don't know. That's, I guess...
Or is there some sort of language that can suggest, the board has, of course, the prerogative of inviting new board members prior to being sworn in, but it's not a given or not a, something like that? If legal can give us some language, probably this will come up for other districts. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for policy? I just want to highlight again that it's great you have on your agenda moving forward of the wellness policy issue, since, of course, that was raised in our, in our coffee and, you know, some fairly kind of detailed ways, so I think it'd be great for us to be responsive as quickly as we're able to be.
We discussed that with the Wellness Committee when they met on Monday, yesterday, right? It's Tuesday, yeah, yesterday. And it's, they're... And it's, it's their meeting in December, and I believe it was their intent to provide the policy committee with a final draft after that, after that meeting, or putting a subcommittee together.
We're going to put a subcommittee together just to focus on that because we are, the main committee that is really focusing on the parent academy for the spring, and that's really taking up a lot of time. So we're going to do a subcommittee outside of the regular health and wellness meetings just to look and to complete a thing, and then we report back to the full committee and then on to the policy committee.
We should have something early.
So in regards to that subcommittee, is it, it's the new regulation that it has to be parent-student and faculty administrative participation?
To create a policy, it's, you have a, and this is one of the discussions we've had, is, is who is a member of the health and wellness committee? That's up to the policy committee as to how that may look like. It's, it's really a matter of what you want it to be, and that will ultimately be up to the policy committee's recommendation to the full board. It's a lot of, from this list of about 10 different types from parents to board members to teachers, nurses, community members, nutritionists, doctors, nurses, it's up to the policy committee as to what you want that makeup to be.
So it's not clear that you have to have one from each?
The regulation says may be members of the health and wellness.
And then it's up to really the board to decide. You could keep it as like Arlington's, kept it as, you could may have any of the following types of individuals. It didn't say you had to have them. It's really up to the committee, I guess, to decide.
Well, ultimately, the board in terms of what the policy says.
Right, right.
There's, there are no mandated members.
There's a lot of highly recommended ones.
Correct.
Students is another area.
So, so members of the policy committee, Mark, Diane, and Liz, if you can speak to this, I mean, clearly there are some members of our community who are interested about the question, the composition of committees, so if you in your next meeting can speak amongst yourselves and come back to us with your sort of considered views.
Well, I think there's going to be a recommendation from the health and wellness committee and then, then the policy committee will take it.
Okay, great. Good. Just so we can be informed.
Sure.
Understand where we're at with all of it. Great. So shall we go back then to anything you want to tell us in personnel, Diane? We didn't see a frog over your head.
We saw you coming down the hall. We thought we'd give you five.
All right, so there's two here. The first one was November 14th. We were preparing for mediation session with the RTA. The second meeting, pretty much the same thing. We had received some information and we went over that for the negotiation, and then with some time that we had left, we started looking at the list for the long-range planning committee. We started looking at responsibilities of the aides and the clerks, and we started looking, Tom had put that together with us, and we started looking at the different buildings and where they're assigned and what their responsibilities are. Started generating questions, as you can imagine. One of the questions, in the high school, we have study halls that are separated by grade, nine and 10, 11 and 12, but they both had low numbers, so we were questioning, questioning that, if they could be combined or, you know, what is the reason for that? There was a lot of information. We didn't have enough time to look at it. We're going to pick that up again at our next meeting, but that was it from personnel.
Our next meeting was not November 27th.
Well, it was supposed to be November 27th, but it's been rescheduled.
Reschedule. Okay, thank you. Questions for personnel? Okay, let's move on to facilities.
So we actually, the meeting was kind of divided into two sections. I could say that bulk of the meeting, we discussed security cameras. The school safety teams are proposing that we add security cameras inside of our buildings. We've had outside cameras for a number of years, but no cameras inside the buildings. Proposal would be to install cameras in common areas of the schools, like cafeterias and hallways, so where adult eyes might not always be on what's happening in that area. Dr. Davenport and Mr. Teeter outlined several occurrences where a video might have been helpful if, you know, when a situation occurred to determine what actually happened and kind of figure out what happened and figure out what to do about it, more, that, along those lines. Mr. Teeter also mentioned that it would be helpful to have cameras if an alarm is triggered during the night. He gets a phone call from the, you know, monitoring company and many times comes to the school to check it out, and if there was a central place where he could look at, at the cameras and see what, you know, if there's an intruder in the building or, you know, determine that nothing's really happening and it's just a false alarm, it'd be easier than, you know, taking a walk around the school to try to find out what's happening. And he could also, you know, determine, he might possibly be able to remotely determine whether, you know, police need to respond or whatever, so we add some convenience in that area. And it was indicated to the committee that Rhymick is really behind the curve as far as having cameras in the schools. Many of the schools have cameras already, and, you know, so we have no interior cameras, although we do have exterior ones, but most school districts have some cameras in schools, inside their schools. So the committee felt that the district should move forward with the proposal. Mr. Teeter was going to look into getting some quotes and was explaining to us that the cost of the cameras would be able to be taken out of the buildings and grounds budget, so there would not be any, you know, major cost. And then, so the rest of the meeting, we discussed other work that's going on. Mr. Teeter and Mr. Binnell have been regularly reviewing plans in details with the architects for the upcoming building project. They're trying to determine scheduling of regular summer work as, you know, in conjunction with construction work that's going to be happening. There will be a period of time when electric service will need to be turned off at the high school to facilitate certain work, including which will be in preparation for installation of the generator and other electrical projects. We're still waiting for SED approval on the project, so hopefully in the next several, several weeks, we'll be getting that approval. And then there's some other projects that Sheldon and his people have been working on.
Any questions or comments?
If I could just clarify on, on the first topic, what, I guess what we're proposing at this point is to, to move forward with that as a pilot project. We actually have some, some used equipment that we could, that we could use that wouldn't involve a cost. A number of years ago, the, the VCR that records the outside cameras was out of service for a while for need of repairs, so, you know, we bought a replacement for that. When the repaired VCR came back, I mean, it's fully functional now, was out of service for a couple of months, I think. So we have that already. We don't have to go out and buy a, a VCR for those cameras. Sheldon has a few, you know, spare cameras that we've used outside, so we're, we're proposing that we, we start the process with the equipment that we have and then see how it works. We also, as I mentioned to you via email earlier today, we got the first phase of our smart bond finally approved after a year and a half, which has nothing to do with cameras. It's, it's for a fiber line between chancellor and, and this building, so that's great, but that also means that we can now move on to submitting additional phases of that money. I mean, it's not a ton of money. It's about $250,000 or so, but security cameras, for example, are one thing you can buy out of smart bond money as well as a whole bunch of other things. So we thought we'd try it on a pilot basis, see how it's working, and then if we decide to do more with it going down the road, we could always write that into a smart bond grant, or if we're not going to go, you know, because these cameras that we have currently are not, they're not state-of-the-art cameras. I mean, they'll, they'll be serviceable, you know, if Sheldon comes up at 2:00 in the morning because the alarm went off, he'll be able to see whether there's somebody walking down a hallway or whether it's a paper that blew off the, the side of a wall that set off the, the motion detector and it's lying on the floor in the hallway. So it'll, it'll capture that. It's not granular stuff, but we thought maybe start, start small, start low-tech, start with what we have here and just see how it works out. So, do anybody have any thoughts about not moving forward with that? I mean, I'd, I'd like to hear whether, whether you're supportive of us starting a pilot project and?
Well, I think on the committee, we were supportive.
Yeah, the committee was, yeah, yeah.
Interested to know. Others have different views, yeah?
Uh-uh. Fully support it, yeah.
You too.
Yeah, we also talked, and again, this wasn't the main focus, but we also talked about the potential, even in the early stages, but more so if we decide to, to take this down the road a little more extensively at some point in the future, that it may even at some point serve a, a function in the event that we had some kind of intruder situation here in our school that from off-site, you know, that these, these, these cameras can be accessed by, you know, Sheldon could access it from his living room actually, if he, if he needed to or wanted to, but that also means that in the event of some emergency, they could also be, you know, accessed off-site too, so that, that could be helpful when you think about the types of awful things that happen in schools. So that could be a benefit, and I was going to mention one more. Oh, the other thing I just wanted to mention for clarity is that even with the outside cameras that we have had for 10 or more years, I think, no one is sitting at a desk watching a bank of monitors. They're recording motion, so we're not, we're not using a staff member to sit there and be watching. It's if something happens after the fact, we can, we can go back because it's, it's recorded, and, I mean, somebody could watch it, but that's not the purpose of what we ever anticipate doing is having somebody sitting in a room with a bunch of TV monitors watching every look and cranny. We, we don't, we're not thinking we would need that at any time in the foreseeable future, so.
And that recorded material is not archived perpetually?
No, no. It was a couple of weeks, I think, before it overwrites it.
Yeah, it's about two to three weeks it starts overriding.
So hearing objections, we'll start going forward and experimenting and trying some stuff out and making some adjustments and keep you up to date.
Great.
Okay, great. Thanks, Laura.
Deirdre, I just have one other question about the facilities project. So once SED approves the project, will Garrett be coming back and doing sort of another, this is what we've decided and this is what the entrance to this building's going to look like and, you know, the rebuild of, of the front entrance and what the window wallet chancellor is going to look like? Is he, is he planning on doing?
Well, that's a good question. We are meeting with them, we have a meeting before winter break.
December 22nd.
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's that.
I don't think it's that.
Yeah, I thought it was maybe the teens. But anyway, we're meeting with them, with all the guys, you know, Rodriguez and Garrett and Kristen and, drawing a blank on the other name. So we'll bring that up. You know, one of the questions there is, did SED change anything in approving the plans?
Right.
That may have result, made result in the necessity for them to redo their plans, but if everything was approved as submitted, I'm not sure if they would be, because most of the stuff isn't really design work. Most of the stuff is in the walls, in the ceilings, in the boiler rooms, underground stuff. It's not like when we put the new wing on, you know, they, they were showing us renderings of the sidewalk and the landscaping and, you know, the brick and all of that stuff. There's really precious little of that in this project, but we'll ask the question. I mean, it's, it's a fair question.
Yeah, because they were talking about having to redesign the entrance to this building.
Yeah, so, and I'm sure if there are any redesign issues, they'll at least run those past us before they, you know, and also.
That's nice.
That the redesign would be within the parameters of what SED approved? Because last thing you want to do is go back to SED with a redrawn set of plans and have to wait for another four, six months. You know, we want to try to go to bid sometime this, this spring so we can start work during the summer, but we'll, we'll ask that question and we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though.
Okay. Next is audit committee, and this is actually a compilation of minutes from November 3rd and November 14th. We spent pretty much all of our time talking about the corrective action plan that is required by New York State and addressing the audit report for the extra classroom activities in the district, and we are working on a different timeline now, so we will be working towards a presentation for the board and agenda on November, on December 12th. Thank you, Tom, for clarifying that. We talked with Steve Bangert, who was extremely helpful in sharing some information he collected at a workshop, advanced issues for student extracurricular activity funds. Clearly, this is something all districts are trying to get up to speed on and really adopt best practices around. He shared what he learned, he showed us templates, he gave us guidelines, all of which I think will be useful for us moving forward. During the conversation, the question of club charters was raised, and it is our sense of, actually, in some districts, all club charters have to be approved at the board level. We don't do that. We tend to focus on the appointment of advisors and things of that nature, and we have certain procedures for the establishment of new clubs, but we did recognize this might be a great moment for a kind of reaffirmation, rearticulation of the charter for existing groups. We've also requested that our colleagues on the policy committee, as we know from the minutes, address these concerns from the policy side. Overall, we recognize that it is important for student treasurers and the faculty advisors who support them to make this a meaningful learning experience for the treasurer, the treasurer's responsible for accurate bookkeeping, so it's really a question of how to give them that training, which Tom and Steve are really committed to do, and helping the advisors to understand how to not just do the work for the students, but help the students learn how to be responsible for those functions. We also, on, at both meetings, talked about the timeline and the actual wording of the request for proposals as we go out to look for our next independent external auditor. Proposals will be due on January 5th. The committee will be meeting the week of the 15th to consider the submissions, and we're hoping to be, doing our interviews toward the end of February. The goal is to bring a recommendation by March 13th for our new independent auditor.
Have you identified groups to receive the RFP?
Yes.
I think we have a list of at least 15.
Oh, great.
Yes.
I think we got about 10 the last time we go out, but we were also doing external and internal at the same time. Now we're just looking for external.
Was that about five years ago?
Yeah, it was five years ago. Yeah, five years ago.
Good. So I guess we're ready now to move on to further comments. Good news.
I just want to give another shout-out to Justin Randall for his inviting everybody to that app presentation. When I was at the Rhymick Science Foundation Board meeting, it also came up there. They were also invited, and they were really ecstatic about the development of those apps and the demonstrations that the case performed. One of the newer board members, Jennifer Presiden, also was there, and she talked to Justin about some of her contacts and resources that she has available at computer science and other areas, and if any of the students wanted to take advantage of that. So I think that's also, it's much like at the Star Library, I guess, as a mentor-type program, so.
That's wonderful. What's that?
I don't think Ed mentioned, but there was a talent show.
Ah, yes.
Which was a lot of fun. I went to it. It was really fun, and. And above, beyond just being fun and nice to see the students performing in all different ways, a particular shout-out to Brendan Shi, who won the grand prize for an amazing Chinese yoyo Diablo performance. Really amazing. I've watched him develop over the years. It was incredible. But I also heard comments around me, behind me, of parents saying, this is why we love it here. Not the talent show, but the support in the audience. The other kids cheered and were so supportive of even the weakest acts. They were really supportive.
Aww.
So I just wanted to give kudos to all the students, both those who performed and those who were great audience members.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Another good news. Any old business?
Question, and I thought about this when Ed was giving his report. Is the school climate survey shut down? Have you collected or have you extended it?
I know they've sent out at least one kind of, you know, hey, well, going to keep it open for, but I'm not sure if they've actually turned off the pipe or not yet.
I just did it this morning.
Oh, tardy.
It's still working, people.
Well, it didn't kick out, and I guess it is.
I know I got a reminder.
Glad the reminder went out.
I got a reminder because I had forgotten about it. So I think that reminder was very well timed because I was like, yes.
John sent out, I thought John sent out a cute reminder. He said, I can't have the middle, the high school and the elementary school beating the middle school out on percentage, so get out there. And he did, he got some more traffic, so we're getting close to the end of it anyway.
I'm going to send out an LRP reminder.
Yeah, I was just going to say, ask about that.
We're going to need a cutoff too as to...
So let's send another reminder once that kind of wave of the school climate.
Maybe the end of next Friday.
That sounds great.
Close it.
I'd really clarify that it's September.
This is a different survey.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Any other old business? Any public comment? Okay. Other. All right, then it looks like we're ready to move on to our action items. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing no requests for removal, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kristen Seacor to commence on or about March 2nd, 2018, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by physician in writing through April 16th, 2018 or thereabouts. To the extent of her accrued sick leave and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through June 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Bill Carney as head basketball chaperone for the 2017-18 winter sports season at a stipend of $465 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2016-17.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant award from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, RSF, in support of funding for the seventh grade trip, the seventh grade in body art anatomy project, submitted by Chelsea Leahy in the amount of $4,725 as stipulated?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? It's not a trip. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. Thank you very much to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for its continuing support of such initiatives. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the probationary civil service appointment of Tracy Belli as a teacher aide at 3.0 hours per diem with a 26-week probationary period effective November 20th, 2017, at the pleasure of the Board of Education, a salary of Step 1, $21,652 prorated, in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2016-17.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the following grant awards from the Rhinebeck Parent-Teacher-Student Organization, PTSO, in the total amount of $2,530 as follows. BMS Anti-Bullying Presentation, submitted by John Kemenitzer, in the amount of $2,200 as stipulated. First Grade Boden Park Syrup-Making Field Trip, submitted by Jenna Yarnell, in the amount of $280 as stipulated. CLS K-5 Movie Day Popcorn, submitted by Kevin Yarnell and Ryan Edson, in the amount of $50 as stipulated.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Want to thank the PTSO for its generous support of all these projects. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of a hand-built buddy bench to the Rhinebeck Central School District for the use at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, constructed as a result of the planning and leadership of Kevin Lyons in fulfillment of part of his requirements to earn the Eagle Ring from the Boy Scouts of America.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Mr. Lyons apologizes. He meant to attach a picture. I do have a picture. If anyone would like one of the first to see it.
Let's pass that around. We got to see that.
He meant to.
That is...
That's so nice.
Wonderful. And as we know, quite an achievement.
How did he come up with the quote?
That's a long story.
It's purple, too.
Of course, it's purple.
Gold writing.
It's great. They're not nice.
Yeah.
May the record show that all members duly inspected.
So is he going to make you picnic furniture at home and all that, too?
I don't think so. You may never swing a hammer again.
My husband will happy to be.
It's going to be all-new playground furniture, thanks to Mr. Lyons. All right, all those in favor? One, are you abstaining? With one abstention, all in favor. That motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of collective negotiations with our teacher team, RTA?
Sure.
Second?
All those in favor? Okay, we are now moving into executive session. Thank you.